Board of 2025, City Mayor Clark would you call the board?
Yes. Councilmember Rhea.
Here.
Councilmember Ruth.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Rochelle.
Here.
Councilmember Pinkerton.
Here.
Councilmember Hutchings.
Here.
Mayor Shoemaker.
Here. Please rise as you're able and join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Each member of council has received a copy of the minutes from May 27th, may give the whole meeting regarding corrections, conditions, or conditions. Your nine minutes will stand approved as well. I invite citizen comments. We could have several people sign up. And we'll begin with Megan Madiris. If you would come to the podium and state your name and address. And your timer will begin once you begin speaking.
Hello, my name is Megan Madiris. I live at 19 Amstor Court in Simpsonville. I moved to Simpsonville in 2009, and although I live in the county, and I'm really glad to call Simpsonville my home, I do have three properties inside the city limits. With a 6% property tax rate that the state of South Carolina bestows upon investors, it's really hard to be able to have cash flow and to save for capital expenses like a new HVAC, roof, et cetera. In 2023, I converted my long-term rental in Westwood to a furnished 30-plus day rental, which is called a midterm rental. This model has allowed me to have enough cash flow to finally have a cushion for future capital expenses. Since that conversion, I have had five tenants, so two years, five tenants. Two were relocation to the Simpsonville-Grebel area. One was a travel nurse who worked in Clinton but wanted more conveniences that Simpsonville had. And two were insurance stays, which means they currently live here already, had a problem with something. One house burning, one with a piper's, and then insurance paid to have them relocated while the repairs were done. I'm telling you this to educate you because not all short-term can fit nicely under that umbrella. Because many people don't know that this is a newer strategy called midterm. So I don't use Airbnb. I found very little traction off the HBO, so my listening is hidden. I primarily use furnished renters, which was initially created for traveling nurses. I don't use a rental agreement. I use a lease that I paid a legal lawyer several thousand dollars to create back in 2021. I am licensed property manager and charge, but I only manage my own rentals. There are Simpsonville and Walden, the county and in the city. My most recent tenant would not have been able to comply with the proposed one-vehicle-for-bedroom regulation. The husband and wife had personal vehicles. Their son, who was early twenties, slept with them, and he had a personal vehicle and a work vehicle. I have a concrete paint driveway where it's single and it's tandem. And then I have a four-by-six line threshold. There are four cars of that residence, but they're a piper's in their home. They had to find alternative arrangements. They stayed with me for 90 days, not me, but at my property for 90 days. I just wish you, or want to make sure that you understand that short-term is not just a weekend or a week. That many people that need temporary or alternative housing that fall under your short-term umbrella are actually residents of Simpsonville or city or county that have had issues and need to relocate temporarily. So I wanted you to know what that was in regard to the short-term regulations.
Thank you. Next is Brent Madiris.
My name is Brent Madiris. 19 Amstor Court, you deserve for my life. But so this is going to be related to what Megan just mentioned. My thoughts about how you move forward with determining the best model for this is doing just what you're doing right now. We appreciate it. We love the city. We love the great reputation that we have. People that come here, most people are not coming here for tourism per se. They're coming because of work or family events and so on. Particularly, I am the person that renovates the properties that we have and everything. And one thing I'm going to call to your attention is, we probably do, we put a lot more attention to detail into properties that are going to be short-term rentals, midterm rentals, what have you, because it needs to be much higher than any ordinary hotel room, what have you, to attract new business. Therefore, we really care for them to have a good experience. So I think that's the additional thing that we offer as, if you want to call us landlords or whatever, offering the short-term, midterm opportunities. Another aspect to this as we go forward with this process is trying to avoid creating something else that has to be enforced. For example, we have, as Megan mentioned, a driveway with parking for probably four cars and an HOA, or maybe there's not an HOA. There are already rules in place for the number of cars that can be parked there. Can it be parked in the street, what have you? So just trying to limit any additional criteria for short-term rental post or what have you to have to be when there's existing law or a common association or something in agreement in place. But those are my main concerns as we move forward. I'd love to hear how, if there are other cities the same size, has the same needs as Simpsonville, how they've done it well, how there's a big partnership between landlords per se and the city. And because we want to keep, we would love to keep this wonderful city kind of how it is. It's a small town that offers a lot of cultural things that you usually don't find in a small town. But that's it. I am so glad I got a chance to be here. Your building's gorgeous by the way, and one of our properties is right across the street. It's available soon. But anyway, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Next is Sean Phillips. Hi guys, my name is Sean Phillips. I have a property owned with my wife, Shana Sheri, Wicker Realtors Shana Sheri Group, at 302 Northeast Main Street in downtown Simpsonville. I want to talk about short-term rentals today. So I just seen the word short-term rentals, so I wanted to come and just say thank you so much for having me on the agenda to talk about. But also, I appreciate that there's conversations about regulations and not just eliminating short-term rentals. So I do have three short-term rentals in the Simpsonville area. What I've noticed in having those since 2017, when I moved my business in downtown Simpsonville, is that we needed people to come to downtown. It's a growing area, and what we've done since 2017 is we've received over 500 five-star reviews. And the people that come to Simpsonville, they're coming because they're visiting family. For graduations, for funerals, for happy things, sad things, some boring things, but not for vacations. So we attract a lot of families. So with those being right next to our real estate company, we're able to actually welcome them to Simpsonville, tell them about the best restaurants they actually use. You know, that's invitation for a place to stay near their families. Actually, now you're here, let me tell you how awesome Simpsonville is. So Ed's Grill is right across the street. They visit there all the time. So thank you for having short-term rentals and talking about regulations. One thing I want to bring, the thing that stood out the most, because I read it a couple hours ago and summarized it, but six months is, in my opinion, too long of a short-term rental definition. I would say, with everything, I would say, let's learn from people that are where we want to be in big cities. They actually have 30 days. And I think it goes in line with 30 days is actually the milestone of having a tenant landlord pact in place. And there's a lot of things that you cannot predict, and there's certain things you cannot have that a lease in place. So there's certain things that I think they have a timeline for a reason. So let's learn from those big cities. Also, it's my understanding that in South Carolina, believe that the accommodation tax, it cuts off at the 90-day mark. So you can't get any more accommodation taxes after 90 days anyways. So it's one of those things to regulate and for the city to not capitalize on is a waste of effort. You guys are so busy, you're doing a fantastic job in Simpsonville. I love how much you guys have done since we moved here. But I want to make it easier, but also there's two tables, I'll say real fast, from this week alone of my clients. One moved out of their house because they felt called to start a foster care program at another house. They left their house empty, and they wanted to rent it out for a couple months. If they have too much red tape, they can't do that. Another example is, I have a house under contract, and they're selling it. Military families want to be moving in, but not right away. So they actually offer to the sellers, and they don't have another place to stay. You can stay there for two more months. But if we have these red tape and these regulations of having to go through this loop, they might not be able to rent it out to the families that are in need. Thank you.
Next is Brittany Mims.
Good afternoon. I am Brittany Mims. And I'm here to talk with you all about Dr. Otto Way. So Dr. Brittany Mims, I live out of way. I am here to speak with you about Parks and Rec and our youth programs and these programs that cultivate our young people around here. So I have coached for the Simpsonville Rec Department and the girls softball program for the last two years after moving to Simpsonville from Alabama. And most recently, I coached the undefeated 10U girls Urban Racing Team. And also coached the All-Star team for 10U. And we beat Rhea, Walden, and then Mountain in the championship for Golden Strip. Didn't see anything about it on the website, but it was posted, and I know we got the MVP six grand, so that was really cool. But I wanted to talk with you all tonight about the girls that play for Simpsonville Rec. Because every girl that plays for this All-Star team through Simpsonville Rec also plays for the travel softball team that we started called the Simpsonville SASS. And I, along with John Harris, who's a Walden resident, so we can talk to y'all. But we started this, and this past February, we came to a city council meeting, and we spoke with y'all, and then spoke with Robbie. And he said that, you know, he would love to see the Simpsonville softball program grow. And I would too. But over the past, you know, years, they've had a little bit of trouble with that. Mainly because the girls that play rec tend to go to travel softball teams in other parks that have travel softball. Well, over the past six months, we've run the softball program. We won a championship for our district, and now we have not one but two travel softball teams. I do 10U, and our other coach, Frank Moore. He started a 12U travel softball team based out of Simpsonville Rec girls. So I guess what I need from y'all, what I'd like to speak with you about is just, can y'all recognize our Simpsonville Rec teams, our Simpsonville SASS, as a Simpsonville Rec-sponsored team? There's a beautiful sign. Is that written up there?
Thank you.
So like that sign says, that the girl, the fields cannot be scheduled unless it's a Simpsonville Rec-sponsored team. My girls struggle to get field time because of a bit of an ambiguous policy. The Rec Department does not schedule field time for anybody but those Rec-sponsored teams. I email, I call, I talk days to days with Chris, Chad, and Robbie about getting field time for these young ladies, but I've had limited to no results. If we do get a response from them, the fields are, you know, we're told that the fields are first come, first served. I feel like this is a terrible injustice to our community and its taxpayers and these kids and their parents. These girls need a place to practice, y'all. It's as simple as that. And we should not defy other travel teams, whether it's baseball or softball, that aren't even affiliated with Simpsonville Rec, to play over Heritage Park. As a coach for Simpsonville Rec and a mom of a very normal nine-year-old kid, and that is probably really bad to say that, you know, a Simpsonville resident and a taxpaying citizen, I would just like to propose to the city council that they recognize the Simpsonville SASS, the 10U softball team, as a Simpsonville Rec-sponsored team. And this way, it is granted. Practices can be scheduled by the Simpsonville Rec Department on team sidelines, just like they are during the rec season. This way, our young ladies will get ample field time, and our parents will know what time to bring them. They will know that we will have a field. It won't be as ambiguous and difficult as it is now. We are literally fighting every afternoon. My mom, I have three children, she gets up there at 4:30 some days to get on a field so we have practice time.
This is, I can give you extra time, but I'll have to call here, but I need to wrap up.
So just to finish, I would like to see this softball program continue to grow. I am happy to be a part of it. I love Simpsonville and the area. It's a beautiful town. And I'm willing to do whatever it takes to make this softball program and these girls, you know, have a future for the sport. Thank you.
Next is Myra News.
Yes, my name is Tyler Mills. Also, I am Brittany Sutton. So just to tag in with her and reiterate, we are advocating for lower exposure and more cooperation with Simpsonville Rec's department. One thing I wanted to bring to attention is that the two main people for Simpsonville Recs or Recs is Mr. Chris and Mr. Chad as the director and the assistant director. But if you go to the website and found in, they have one director, two supervisors, two coordinators, and a senior assistant. I would like to advocate that we see about maybe getting Parks and Rec some additional employees, whether that be administrative assistant and or coordinator, to help with some of this. As a softball and baseball parent, it's very difficult to get communication with them, either at the phone or the email. I know those guys are extremely busy out there trying to prep the fields, and there is always a lack there. If they had some more help, I think I could currently help out. That would also help out if, go to the website, there is a Co-Rec baseball camp this week at Heritage Park, which they do have a pay to go, but there is no mention of softball. There hasn't been no communication about that. If there was an administrative assistant or a coordinator, we could have some more opportunities for that, which then would bring more exposure to Simpsonville softball. On top of that, I know that Heritage Park is a big place. We've been to several different travel ball parks. There hasn't been one in Heritage Park. So that facility is being greatly underutilized in that, which is economic opportunity and it was to give more exposure to Simpsonville, whether it be softball and or baseball, which then in turn hopefully will get some of all effects with the middle school and high school programs as we continue to develop athletes in this area. So I'm advocating for more help, more communication with Parks and Rec, but also then hopefully get your ear to send that they do need some help out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Grace Nims. Aw, Grace. Grace doesn't want to speak. It's okay, Grace. You don't have to. Thank you, Grace. Next is Frank Moore.
This is four, sorry, I did not forget. I'm just putting on a Maybach softball game.
It's more.
My name is Frank Moore. I live at 6th Neural Court. I am, yes, good afternoon. This is Peter Knight. Appreciate it. I am the other coach for the 12U travel softball team. Mine is called the Simpsonville Surge. So I wanted to obviously, thought I'd give out my branding, get to see what you look like. Thought I did a good job of putting the city in there as well. So the big thing is, is I've been in the Rec for five years now. My daughter's seven, turning eight, and now she's turning 12. So I'm growing within the Rec department myself. I've been one of the two coaches with more part of the fantasy team with the program for the last five years. And this past year, what happens is, when I take turn 12, they phase out of the program. So what I decided to do is try to do something for those girls that are facing out. So I started this 12U program, and I talked to some of my parents. The big thing was the cost of some of these travel programs. So I came up with a program that allowed them to do six tournaments this summer with two uniforms, helmets, which you can see right there, for all their 40 for $375, which is possibly affordable for most families out here. If you go down the road to Elite, it's going to cost you a lot more. So I was able to get some girls from the Rec program, to obviously stick with the program, and they're playing with me this summer. I have two coaches, Evan Warloff, who's been with me for the last five years as well, coaching Rec, and David Moore. In fact, his daughter is this teen student. So you might know, you guys know that as well as David Moore. So I'm a long representative within Simpsonville, I too as well within the coaching staff. Again, so the thing that I'm looking for is the field time. Back to what Brittany was talking about, there's a lot of other travel organizations that are using the field. They may know the first come, first served. So I've been out there at 4:30 in the afternoon, no asthema, crisis. This past Tuesday, I paid for Clinton's, I mean for Presbyterian College's coach to come and run a practice for us. I paid out of my own pocket, and I had to be there at 4:30 to make sure we had a field. So I'm afraid that if I got there at 6:00 and started, I'd have a coach here with no field to show us girls some drills that she wasn't showing us. So that's always my fear when I get there early, because we have a team of boundmen that shows up. We have Elite, actually uses our field as well, I'm grown. They use the fields here and there for their facility. So that's just kind of the struggles we have to figure out, to make sure we have field time for those girls. It'd be great if we could just go ahead and put something down on the counter and say, hey, I have this time, Brittany has this time. Since it is, you know, involved in the rest of the world, so trying to give them something to hold on to and continue to play, even when people phase out once they get to their 12, you know, 12 age. So that was really what I wanted to talk about, is to make sure to see if we can get some field time scheduled. See how we can do that. I even talked to Chris about maybe I can just, you know, put a schedule up there. I don't mind doing something, help out. We're going to list our times on the field. So if someone comes out, you know, okay, those are Simpsonville teams, you know, that's the time they're going to be there, and they can work around that schedule. I have a gratitude that I always say, so there's two days out of the week that I'm really on the field. So it's not a whole lot of time we're asking for, it's just give us two days a week for my team and I'm sure Brittany can do the same as well. So I appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Our next speaker is Stone Forster.
Hey, this is Stone Forster.
This is Forster. I just want to give you a heads up. We have an issue with our time system. So is someone going to blanket me? Please.
Okay, you're free. Very good. 116 Weber, just over in Cedar Cove. Longtime resident of Simpsonville, lifetime resident of Grebel County. And want to talk to you to knock out the golf cart regulations. There's new laws that went into effect, May 22nd. And part of this law allows local municipalities to make their own changes to regulations, times they can drive and where and when. Now the 35 mile hour limit, totally fine with that. You really don't want to be anywhere else on the road at the golf cart. Speed up with that. But what I'd like to talk about is extending the times, like summer hours or even in the fall and winter. You might be doing something, there might be something at the park, over, it's a little late. It's dark. Right now, the law states daylight hours only. And part of regulations for registering, you have to have headlights, taillights, and horn flashers, which to get your permit, you have that. So I'd just like to visit, seeing if the council has thought about, would consider thinking about making some extensions to the operational hours. You might be over at friends' house watching a ballgame or something going on in town, but still operating in the guidelines and things like that. Not trying to change anything, just maybe extend the hours. Thank you for your time.
Then I can leave. There's our citizen comments. I am 16, staff reports. Begin with our financial report, and since we are down a financial director, we're going to turn to Mr. Code.
That's right. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. You should have received in your packet a copy of our monthly financial update for the month of May 2025. I am more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions to Mr. Code regarding the financial report? I'm 16, city administrator report. Great. Mr. Code, regarding the game.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Likewise, you have received a copy of the city administrator's report for June 2025 in your packet. I would like to highlight just a few things. We are actively working with our public assistance consultant on reimbursement for Helene-related storm damage. Things that FEMA are taking quite some time, which I'm learning is the usual course of business. But we have a great advocate we're actively working with. Obviously, in the municipal complex, we have acoustic paneling, which is in the process of being installed. Everything that you see behind you is going to be completed within the next couple of weeks. You can expect some felt patent that's installed to cover up the buttons and all the seams. So from my vantage point, the acoustics seem to be better this evening, et cetera. But we'll proceed accordingly to make sure that everything is satisfactory for the council and for the public. One last thing I'd like to call attention to is our downtown revitalization and street skate project. Co-administrator Grace Lee, Director West, and Director Derby and I met with our civil engineers from Cetranscope two weeks ago, and we discussed a basic strategy for the project. And so we have scheduled a meeting for next, this coming Wednesday, to sit down with Cetranscope and to talk about what that might actually look like. And it's our hope that we'll be able to craft a meaningful scope of work that's going to enable us to work within available financing for the city. I'm happy to answer any questions about those items or any other items. Oh, actually, Mr. Mayor, there's one other thing I would like to add. And this was last week on June 18th. Mayor Shoemaker and I, we attended the quarterly meeting of the South Carolina Conservation Board. And we were there in support of the Lomas family, who are the current owners of portions of the Moore Farm on Horsepin Creek, just on Jonesville Road. They own approximately 111 acres, and they intend to place that property under conservation management. And so they were able to acquire some funding through the conservation board. And again, the mayor and I were into goods. And it was, even though the property is technically outside of the city, it's contiguous. It's actually contiguous, basically we could, you know, councilman over here, you might be able to throw a football all the way out to the woods to hit it.
Across the creek.
You could walk across the creek. There we go. You could bet. So it's very close to the city, and Mr. Mayor, I don't want to add anything to that.
I will just add that in terms of what you would like to see in development and growth, this opportunity to preserve 111 acres of farmland right in the core where all this massive growth is going is amazing. And I'm just so impressed with the Lomas family, who are foregoing offers of millions of dollars. They're literally knocking on their door trying to obtain the property so that they can grow the final product and have our rooftops. And the Lomas are saying, no, we want to preserve this as farmland obtaining funding from the conservation board and some other sources and building under the conservation piece and the heritage site forever. I have to say forever. We'll see that as an amazing legacy that the Lomas family has left to the county in future generations. Thank you, Mr. Cope. Any further questions? Has a member here?
As I said, I know the mayor asked me about this a long time ago, I haven't gotten it done yet. You know, I look out on my back deck and see whether I can see their property. Like the summer retreats are a little deep and it's pretty fine, very happy with that. Because that's only probably two hundred acres that they have. So I might a hundred of them, it's a point of observation. Because I think they've always expressed that they'd like to keep it that way. And like you said, I don't think you can emphasize, we're a lot, a lot of money. So thank you for that.
So one comment I'll make is, is that I think the order that you're referring to is there are actually three different pieces of property. You know, there are three different property owners. One of them is our chief judge, Judge Moore, as a matter of fact, who is interested in getting this property in the conservation system. And then there, I'm not sure what her relationship is, but she's the neighbor that's literally right in the city. And some of that's up against the park here. So they're talking her as well. The first big piece of it, so very, 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 very. Any further questions for Fox or for Mr. Cope or for the group?
Just in light of some of the conversations, I'd be interested if you would possibly get with Mr. Graceley on the way out. And maybe to Vegas and speak to some of the issues that's not me that has brought up. Maybe other members of council are interested. Specifically why a team within the city, the city right team, that has uniformed systems, are in trouble getting deals over teams out. And I'm asking these questions, I'm pointing fingers and asking why they're running the call.
Sure.
If y'all could get that information and maybe maybe other members of council would be able to piggyback on the council and talk. I want to tell, but I would be interested in too, why that is and what we can do to maybe free up some field space for actual city right league teams rather than bottom outside teams to kind of take place. First and everyone, the city can, I would use that. I've found out that, right, can I go to the council?
Yes, sir.
That's a good question.
You know, I'll open that to wait to, I love this, uh, Simpsonville Rex source from way back then. I'll tell you the difference here, we didn't have travel ball teams then, we played season sports. And if, 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 correct me if I'm wrong, I think what we'd have to do is try to carve something out that's going to to allow us to put a travel ball team in Simpsonville on the ground to get them practice field time and things like that. Because they're not truly a right team per se, they're travel ball. I don't know if these are required to participate on regular teams and then travel ball. So I think that's what we're going to need to work on, is what kind of carve out, perhaps we can include, I guess, Latin with their term sponsorship of travel ball teams that are, can, uh, can, I don't remember, say, where the banner of Simpsonville across the two thousand and hundreds. And I would be very interested in speaking with each member of the council, who can do that. Because nobody is to be representing the city police force, so I hope I can see that.
Yes, sir.
And as I mentioned, yeah, switch gears on a little bit. I want to talk about downtown city state, we're on the day, I don't think I'm the only councilman or even anybody in the city Simpsonville would like to see this thing. Getting some traction just for idea of, I first saw it in council in January two thousand and twenty-four. The meeting that I said that we were going to go out and bid in March and then start the campaign in May, two years, a year ago. And I appreciate that we're going to go out and break this down and the phases, I've been having that for a while. I know that the latest assessment that I've seen is too explosive when we had to move along. Question of Starwood is, when you're talking with these engineers, when you're not going to break it down in the face. I not talk to you about someone in the face of that. Is that breaking it down to bid, phase one, then bid phase two, then bid phase three? Is that the approach?
At this point, it's unclear how many phases will be required. But certainly, we're trying to identify what a meaningful phase one would look like. We need to make sure that the improvements are sufficient to yield the desired result in terms of traffic flow and safety and the other primary goals of the project. But in terms of what those additional, what an additional phase or phases, that's something that we'll need to determine. And again, we have that meeting scheduled for next week. So I'll have a lot more information shortly.
Yeah, so I don't know, we talked about a little bit of force, talked about three different phases. Concentrating on the traffic of Starwood. I would like to suggest maybe in the discussion with engineers and others, instead of possibly putting it out in packages, that would include the whole project with options to do the phases in sequence. That would be a council opportunity to say, we actually got it. It's, it would be either the total cost analysis of the entire project with three separate or whatever phases it would take with those options to go forward. And if you got one contract and it was completely decided bid into the phase one, it would be easier to go into a phase two. Especially in this regard, our state infrastructure goes, stopping the Starwood projects is never been cost of mobilization goes way up. And as you know, cost of everything has gone up over the last couple of years. So I highly encourage when we talk to these engineers that we can look at. I appreciate that we might not be able to do the whole package, but at least if you know what that it's going to look like in the future. It gives council an opportunity to go out and go for it or not. And then you can break this down to where we can add something meaningful in the future. Especially concentrating on the near-term needs, which would be the traffic flow and the infrastructure, as we discussed. The infrastructure portion of it is as important as anything. Because it gives opportunity for future both the city, whether not just the streets, but the less over communications, sewer, sewer water and all that. It'll totally enhance the downtown area.
Any further questions, Mr. Cope? Thank you, Mr. Cope.
You're welcome.
We have representatives from each of our departments here, departments here, usually our department heads. Are there any questions from the department reports from council? Councilor Ruscha.
I have some questions for Chief Anchar. I'm sorry, ahead of time, this is, I don't really, we didn't, we didn't talk, we were asking you on the same twenty-sixth of, or it's in the month of May. And it looked like on your chart, under, well, it reported that it was the highest cases compared to everything else. I don't know, like cases. And they look kind of, kind of like, kind of political wise to into the wine area. And my inclination is to ask for more, I think it all depends on do we, it's happened most of the time, you know, you can grab.
Yeah, typically, we see it more than you do in the daytime.
Okay. And I also see that over short, I set up office or computer station. And so I can see how that's a problem for me, yeah. And so I guess what I want to find out is what are we doing to fill in those empty positions? Are we doing all that and knowing that we, are we offering up salaries and benefits to compete with the current cities? What can we do better?
Well, the salaries is probably, we put that on the, excuse me, on the agenda originally for the first budget. And we did, we're waiting on the RTR status, that's very important for us to stay competitive. We had some unusual losses that were not kind of controlled out of the norm. We do currently have one who started today. So the numbers you have are going to be a little bit off because I've got one starting, started today. About one in a couple of weeks, they'll be starting, they complete the process, so that'll fill two positions. We just got to finish their training through the academy and all that stuff to get them up, take a little time, but we'll get them there. We are currently actively rescheduling some new testing for new other candidates. And we are looking, we had had a meeting about discussions on alternative ways to recruit and look for options that might help to beef this up. We're seeing a trend in this profession, unfortunately, over the last several years, that we're not getting as many applicants. And what we get is harder to get through all the processes, to clear all the hurdles for them to complete everything, to be satisfactory, to hire and get started in a job. So these are all things we're facing. The pay is very important, it's a big part of it. We've got to stay competitive, got to be able to give us a way to compete with what's going on in Greenville County. To address your question about the auto break, we do see these as, as birds typically, it's not unusual this time of year with schools out, unfortunately. It costs a lot of time. We will have the kids that end up being a big player in this game. We see these things, we end up catching them or identifying them. So that's not unusual. We have actually got some of our investigators altering their shifts so that we can focus a little bit on some of this stuff too. So that, we are doing some things in-house to try to adjust and see what we can come up with, with what we are. The staffing issues are what they are, but we're managing, it's nothing for us to be panicked about right now. We do need to address it, we're not going to let it sit. We are actively, like I said, we're looking for some ideas and solutions. And again, as, we're putting in all the effort to get us back where we need to be.
You did very badly, came to my neighborhood and I called the neighbors that were concerned and told them, hey, you know, don't leave this, be hard, don't be that, be hard, this is a little foreign, leave them alone, leave your garage door open during here. I think that's such a necessary. I wonder if maybe you could, I guess I need to run it through the city administrator, I'm thinking some sort of little bit of ad campaign to kind of spread that word a little bit more online, maybe you are about provisions. Seems like that you will assist.
And we do, from time to time, we will do the PSAs, if you will, about these different factors to how we reduce the likelihood of being a victim. It's unfortunate not everyone takes the advice or listens, but we are pushing, I think we do try to do some things to get that out to the, in the general public outside of those meetings that you're referring to.
Assistant, uh, Councilor Rafferty.
Chief, I know we originally installed cameras at all our parks, as other regions did as far. Are we, is this which far monitoring those cameras on a regular basis or?
We don't have somebody, it's like the other cameras, I don't have somebody that can actively monitor them current, like full-time. But you are able to have access to it, it's like you need the other cameras at the city. So when we are able to, or there's a need to, we do have access to that stuff.
We, we had an incident recently there and I'd like to be able to go back and, you know, view those footage of that or someone did that, determine who was involved. I know we had a call, like a fire department out there for, you know, the man who got, didn't he really? No, it's not wrong. But yeah, if we have assistance for going back and checking, I think that would be, would be helpful.
Yeah, absolutely, we, 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 I just want somebody that monitors them on a daily basis. But we do have access to that, anything, everybody, all the departments, everybody's got stuff, they make sure we have access when you have these situations. But we use that as a tool for the investigation to determine what leads we have that might pan out into identifying suspects responsible for these various incidences that occur.
Also, I want to thank you for the, uh, the attention you've given to our neighborhood with, uh, traffic control and, uh, station. Difference in applicable behavior, I appreciate that.
No problem, we're trying to, if folks will let us know what's going on, then we would definitely try to put the effort into identifying and addressing those issues.
Mr. Cope. We have one in the national story, for Holden, in the last couple of weeks, in Fox, in a side area of, uh, Kentucky. Didn't know that was present here, I was not allowing it in the report, but it's awfully painful that is. Every time you go to ATM, I'm always looking behind me. Uh, you know, I actually know that it's there down here, but I saw it reported, I'm like, I'm Holden in that green. I didn't know that it was an issue here yet, you've seen it or anyone reported it?
It is new, we have had one recently, we were involved in some of that, we actually have done some correspondence with the media about our knowledge. It's, for me, I'm learning a lot about this new trend through our investigators and somewhat, because as you said, this is something that we haven't seen a lot of, so it's new to us. But we have had an incident and our guys have been working closely with some of the other agencies too, because a lot of that is, it's interplay with one another, the same folks. Of course, they don't just stay in one jurisdiction, they move around from each one, so.
Chief, can, can the rest of us can you explain what I mean is, I know, but if you could.
And I can give you the basic stuff that I'm still learning about it, but yeah, it boils down to someone following someone from ATMs and so forth. And then trying to commit the property after they realize they potentially took out sums of cash and things like that. Or they've left them in the vehicle, they'll break into the vehicle. So there's a few variations on how it works, but the simplicity of it is, is that you're being followed by someone or who's targeting you because they've seen you at the night or the ATM, and they potentially figure you have cash.
Council? Thank you, Chief. Any questions for other departments? All right, I want to thank all of our department heads and park representatives for being here. If you are accused, if you would like to go, you can stay in residence, of course, you are welcome to stay if you like. Next is item seven, business. These are items that are anticipated to come before council at the next business meeting. Actually, in this particular case, the only item we have on the agenda is recommendation to be sent to the planning commission. So it won't come to our next business meeting if it comes back to the planning commission, it will come back to our, you know, the whole, so there's a clarification there. Item seven A, short-term rentals. Under our current ordinances, short-term rentals, Airbnb, ERBO, HomeAway, that kind of thing, they're not allowed. We haven't aggressively enforced this. There's demand for this type of rental, both by property owners wishing to take advantage of the property they own and by travelers who wish to use this type of lodging. Keeping this type of business illegal in Simpsonville is not practical. And I don't think it would be a particularly popular decision, since we know we have short-term rentals and they're operating in the city. And it's not at all our intent to formally legalize short-term rentals. What the reason why we have this stuff clearly centers around two major concerns, which allowing short-term rentals to operate under the radar. First, short-term rentals in hotels and motels are not operating on the same footing. Currently, short-term rentals are not reliably, I'm not saying that this applies to all short-term rentals, but some are not reliably paying business licensing or collecting hospitality and accommodations taxes. So it gives them an unfair advantage. They can charge less to the consumer, so they have an advantage over the hotels and motels who do reliably whether pay their business licenses and collect hotel and accommodations taxes from their contractors. Second, without ordinance in place, if we do have a problem with a short-term rental, for example, let's say it becomes a place that's popular or opposed to the departments that are dislocated for the neighbors, then the Simpsonville Police Department doesn't have something that they can point to in order to get that issue under control. Maybe there are other ordinances that would apply, but it's a little more difficult, will only apply on a case-by-case basis. But nothing where you can go back to the property owner and say, hey, listen, there's this problem under our, or criminal ordinance. You need to control that problem as the person who is renting out the property. There's some additional points that have been brought to my attention by Councilman Pinkerton, and I think we'll cover those when we begin the discussion. Members of council, I move to send a request, along with the applicable documentation, to the planning department and planning commission to consider regulation of short-term rentals and for them to return a recommendation to the committee of the hall. So I have a motion from the mayor and a second from the councilman, Mr. Cope. Discussion. Councilor Rafferty. Oh, Councilor Rafferty. Okay, fine. I have a question. Yeah, that's one, are we only discussing the planning commission today? Yes, that's, that's all we're discussing, is just sending this to the planning commission for them to send a recommendation back to us. Okay, oh, send you out. Any questions? About that in particular? Could really, on the second page. Those, if I don't ask questions, that might not give me the answers, and that's why I'm not reaching out and asking. Rental aid probably show the innocent entirety to be prepared to terminate on a purpose basis. How, how?
Uh, how, how was that, that was somebody subletting a woman in their, their, um, their townhouse, their apartment? Uh, is there any, if, 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 just express these and write notes back to me, that's fine, I just have questions. Uh, because I know there are people that own townhomes or apartments that have two, three veterans, they sublet, right? I didn't know this pertained to that also, uh, because they, they're, I don't even know how long they're going to have. Uh, number two, rental, a tax, single family, well, her apartment is strictly prohibited, so that would knock out apartments, uh, townhouses, carriage houses, anything that has a, um, chair wall, correct? That's what I, that's what I'm seeing there. Um, and then again, five, let's see, number, number of total guests, um, that would, that would pretty much, you know, that, just do a free veteran, so if someone had larger, not available, it's Airbnb. Um, it's got to be, you know, the free veterans, it has to be for that, in almost all instances. Um, and that seems a little, little much to one of that part. Uh, five, or five, um, I don't, I don't get the, if, if, Mr. Roy could help us, I don't understand. Either asshole pay, part of that, I mean, some people just, that, excuse me, asshole additions. Excuse me, to their driveway and things, I didn't understand why, it makes some, I mean, why that part is there. Um, and then part eight, um, I just don't, that's kind of all the basis, to keep a two-year record of, 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 sorry, short-term rentals. And you're keeping a two-year database of, of people's personal information. I, I personally have, you know, mine, no address and, and distances. I still don't see that part of the transaction, but, uh, yeah, I saw it for all, it was out there, it's, it's, you know, feedback, everything else to see. Uh, whatever else to do about that. Thanks.
Councilor Roy, Mr. Kirby, I'm hoping that you're taking notes, or we'll certainly have the audio, so that you can take these questions back to the planning commission. And for clarification, council, uh, these, uh, these two ordinances that are, are in the draft were, uh, put together by District Minutes and Mark Warner, planning director, uh, who had those in place, and we kind of put that on hold and, and brought it up to, you know, let's reconsider that. So, that's where this comes from. There are two ordinances because one is the ordinance that would establish, uh, regulating for rentals. And the other one is the tax ordinance that we go with, it's not an ordinance, so it requires two separate ones just for that.
Council, Mr. Roy.
I have a question, I want to answer the question, but I agree with this one, how long in a general hotel, these records of who stayed? Because I'm imagining that'd be years long, and I'm like, if you remember, both honors, very, back in the, I think, 2000, wow. So, I think, um, it's necessarily based on these records of who stayed, that's, I'm not sure the city needs to have those for, for, I mean, all the information behind it.
Councilor Roy, is there, is there any way to know, probably not, how everyone, how many of this was fact, and how much potential issue it has to add to the bottom line? Is there any, any idea of how many people were in, in the city that?
So, one thing that we do not have handle on is exactly how many short-term rentals there are in the city. Uh, we know they're there, but you can go, go look it up on VRBO and see, can I rent a place in, in Simpsonville, or look up on Airbnb? So, we know that they're out there, but there, even though you know they're there, you can't go there and find out exactly where they are, who the property owner is, or they have a very clean list, uh, well, they are. Uh, the last number that I've heard, which, um, is not recent, was, was, you know, thirty to forty, or six, so. And if they were being rented on a fairly regular basis, it would be, you know, it would be some additional revenue related to that. And I'm not chasing revenue, I'm just basically getting, I'm even floating with the hotel hotels.
Yeah, a couple of accounts, um, Mr. Phillips, vote to a ninety-day collection period, are we, is that in the draft that we were aware, the planning commission be aware that we would be able to have taxes back on day ninety-one?
As far as I know, that's news to me, uh, but I do think that there are some good considerations about the definition of a late assignment, that makes it short-term rental versus immediate term rental, or is it longer term rental? Uh, I think this is something that also needs to be considered by the planning commissions, what that length of time is. Uh, maybe thirty-eight is a good number for that.
Another question would be, if someone owns three to five properties, they would only have to fill out one business license, correct? Or they have to fill out a business license for a property?
If it's the same business, there's no reason why they can't have, uh, a company that, that includes multiple properties. If that's, but that's their choice.
I, I would, I'm for planning commission to look at this, I'm more, I'm, 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 I would encourage Phillips, speakers tonight, to this, and others that you might know, to go to the planning commission to speak. Um, you guys obviously know this even more than anyone in front of you tonight, so maybe you can help, uh, direct planning commission to eliminate these rules, so we make a fair, um, decision, which is not, which is our, uh, thing.
Councilor Shat.
A little concerned about the number of adults per bedroom, I mean, even in your average, um, town, you can have two, I mean, that, you can have four adults in one bedroom, you have a dorming bedroom, you see how that goes. I don't know, I mean, we shouldn't necessarily regulate that. Uh, we can really get the leads of this, if we get two, maybe, and then, you know, then it has a problem with enforcement. Who's going to not inform, not inform the adults in any given room, which probably shouldn't be, uh, ordinances that we can enforce, um, fairly for everyone. Um, the council shouldn't need ordinances, just having, you know, get the leads of that. And given what, uh, we've heard tonight, I think we need to delineate between short-term rentals and midterm rentals, and we do pass the ordinance. Um, as someone said tonight, you know, thirty-eight is usually the limit for a short-term, and that's for good reason. Um, although even if it's on hotels, you can pay off a two-day permit, you can literally check out, and you're just getting into the different room and your stays are, so if you want to live in a hotel, you want to do, so there's ways to circle around this, and I think about some in place. Um, I just don't think we need to get, um, I think we still need to be working in the interim, I don't think we need, um, quite so much work. Um, the large gatherings part, weddings, reunions, and gatherings of one to eight persons. Um, you know, some events on a very large house, it can very hot, have eight, eight persons, so I don't, I don't necessarily, um, think we should limit that. And the whole reason people will come here is usually to visit, and the type of events, not, they're not, you know, three bedrooms to have, um, here on Main Street, um, but if there are larger properties, they shouldn't be gathered there. Um, the driving on the, the driveway, um, whether or not it's paved, I guess, kind of like, uh, Mr. Roy brought up. I'm not sure why that's important, other than if it's in an area where everything is paved, um, and I, I, if there were short-term rentals in my neighborhood, I wouldn't want that parking on the grass. I would want, um, laying down gravel on, you know, the scum pit and parking on it, so I think there should be some in place, um. But if it's all the beaten path, um, on the edges, you know, of the county, and they have the gravel lot already, I would make four a lot. And, um, one ordinance to consider, that's all I think.
We're going to cover Mr. Pinkerton's issues that he, he may be aware of, has these laws for the planning commission as well. On the ordinance for, um, establishing short-term rental regulations, paragraph, uh, under section ten dash two ninety-four, a permit required, paragraph B, it requires a permit to go along with the business license. And we just, uh, want to make sure, the department wants to make sure that we are not setting a requirement for our staff that it's difficult to run through our evolved business licensing software, that, you know, that we need to buy for business license, uh, this type of. That's something that you need to do, not, just like accidentally putting some words in order, it's making something very difficult for staff. So, we just want to make sure that's covered. Section ten dash two ninety-five, application for permit fee, paragraph A eight, discusses properties located in an area with a property owners association, homeowners association. Um, there's a question around, um, for example, Powerball has a pretty strong homeowners association. If you move into Powerball, you, you're in, you're going to have to pay dues, and, uh, you can be held accountable for complying with their covenants. But in Pointe City, for example, they don't have a strong, uh, uh, homeowners association. And so, the question is, is, is there a mechanism in place where, and you could, like in Pointe City, could possibly, um, uh, enact a ban on short-term rentals, just, uh, what, what we don't want to do is that homeowners association decides to enact a ban on short-term rentals. That's, that homeowners association are trying to override their rules, um, so that's a question. I'll pass these along to the speaker, if you can, if you can, with you. And then under paragraph B, it imposes a fee for any short-term rental that is found to be operating without a business license, and a permit for the short-term rental to be licensed and permitted effectively, it's a purity measure for anyone caught who's trying to operate under the radar. Um, in that section, there's a fill-in-the-blank date to allow for a grace period after the enactment of the ordinance. And we just need to be sure that we allow several months, because if I get here, it's not to catch people back. We want to give people, you know, plenty of time to, you know, get their earnest, and it's all, that's, that's, I'll pass those along. That's, that, Mr. Pinkerton.
Just to clarify one thing, we talked about, um, first of all, I'm, I'm, I'm just wondering, I can, I'm advocating for against short-term rentals, I can be a positive. My, one of my questions was, uh, in, say, Pointe City, and there's other neighbors that do not have HOA, and others, neighbors that have HOA that now restrict, uh, income rental. Um, but we do have covenants, which are documented in the process of including county, for instance, that do not allow for businesses. I can understand, I'm talking, talking frame, so that neighbor that, 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 you know, CBS on the corner, uh, one of our neighbors, but, my, my question was whether, and this is on the planning department, it's certainly, it is during the world, uh, we're legal, whether that house is actually considered a business. Um, I don't know if you run a business, a house, that's not a way, I mean, you can sort of do that, it's allowed by our own ordinances, but if a house becomes a business, it would be allowed by, again, that's, that's just a question I had, to make sure that, uh, possible problems down the line, whether it ever comes up, who knows, but if somebody had an argument, uh, and that, even the neighbor didn't have any kind of HOA, I just want to make sure that, uh, there's an opportunity to be able to go to something that, uh, creates law, I guess.
Senator Matthews?
Um, as most of you are aware, we had extensive conversations about this in our, in our, in our association movement. The idea came forward that each community has a different, um, look, uh, different need or a different approach to, to this. I think in Simpsonville, uh, there is a need for short-term rentals, um, we, and it's, and it's, as one of our speakers said earlier, a lot of this, people coming into town to visit family or for whatever reason, um, and they, uh, in my opinion, short-term rentals are superior a lot of ways to a hotel, uh, because you're ready to get the family together in the home and enjoy it. Um, I, I would like to just not put so many restrictions on it, though, uh, some of the thing, I think, the large gatherings, I mean, if you have a family coming in for a funeral, for instance, you might have a large gathering at that, at that residence for a while. Uh, we don't want to necessarily, um, focus on that, uh, if it's not causing a problem. Uh, and, and we have ordinances in place that will deal with it if it is. So, I'd like to just maybe limit some of those things a little more, uh, restrictions. Um, our, our ward, uh, in Westwood, we have, uh, over a thousand, thousand thirty-five homes, I think. And, uh, Zillow, according to Zillow, there's fifty-four rentals right now in, in Westwood. I have no idea how many of those are short-term or long-term, but I do know that we tend to have more problems with long-term rentals than we do with short-term rentals. So, um, that, to me, uh, the, the, the short-term rental, I, I'm encouraging us to look at this and develop something that will be, will be, uh, uh, attractive, uh, for our, for people to come into Simpsonville and have, have, on my place to stay. And the regulations should be as limited as possible.
Mr. Williams?
Um, I'm in favor of moving this forward to the commission and, um, both then having this put in place. Um, and agreeing that having more defined timeline of what a short-term rental is. Um, also, just a thought on that one that we were talking about, limiting the amount of people per, um, per rental, is, if you wanted to just not have a, you know, a large group of people staying in the rental, instead of putting an actual number on it, just regulating it to only a non-people-for-air with sleeping spaces, because instead of, you could have the bedrooms and pull out couch and, or a couple of those, and people are, people have out of the sleeping beds in other parts of the house if you fit more people. So, instead of bedrooms, just, um, proper sleeping arrangements. But I think, I think this will, people are going to, will work to do that and have, draw the, uh, fill in how many rentals we can ever run, I would say.
Senator Roy?
Yes, I'm a member of a thirty-day rule, because it's gonna stay on short-term. But yeah, if you ever go down, I'm sure that I get concerned there, technically giving the business. I also have outreach with the president, Mike Ecker, but and he put a perspective on it and he thought about our covenants. I bet a lot of our covenants out there have absolutely no understanding of what comes to short-term rentals because they didn't exist until a few years ago. He said he would be very appreciative of this because right now there are guardrails in our neighborhoods. He would be like, so what this is gonna do is this will be... This is... I'm a resident, our neighborhood has ninety percent of open-to-changing our covenants. That's staggering. And it's hard to do. It's pretty much seventeen out of nineteen, thirty, eighty-eighteen. So this will be what their covenants change. This will be what they can use to enforce for their rentals and create these sort of happenstance language. And I guarantee you, right, I will let that down. She or Councilman Root, he will answer. I've had a very high percentage as a language in our covenants. And so that's why what we're doing right now in the next couple weeks will be very important, that we get this right because this will involve the land for a lot of neighborhoods. But due to one matter, hey, Daniel, as I said in the meeting before, as it comes to covenants, the more restrictive of the two, it's precedence. So if we pass something that's this, but an HOA extends it to this, then the HOA, that's what is used for the least. That's why I'm saying that they will have these in there. So.
All right. I think this is all very good discussion. I want to clarify a couple of things. This is a recommendation to go to the next planning commission meeting, which will be in August. Is that correct? Okay. So we would not, if they're able to deal with this all in August, we would not get this back until our committee of the whole in September. Sort of another, there's gotta be these two more cases for public comment and interaction with counsel and the planning commission. And then business meeting October, first meeting, and business meeting in November for second meeting. So this is not something we're trying to rush. The other thing that I want to encourage Mr. Root to take back to our planning commission is this is a draft. This is not something that we are pushing on the planning commission. This is, we're asking the planning commission to consider this and please consider all of the public comments that we're getting and the comments that council has made here tonight because I think it's very important to pay about, we're trying to get this right. We're not trying to rush this. This is something that is, I think, needs to be addressed, but, you know, comments like, we don't wanna be too restrictive, you know, thirty days. I think those are all great thought processes to take back to the planning commission. But the word is over. We'll look forward to seeing what happens. Mr. Root?
Good question. And so are we passing this to planning commission as in we want them to vote that we develop a short-term office or ordinance? Or are we actually asking them to go comb through everything that we just talked about and then through and bring something back in a legal form? Is that what involves city attorney?
I don't think we're gonna need, for us to get it back, we're gonna need something in legal form to consider, otherwise we'll just spend our wheels. So yeah, the request was to consider regulation for terminals and for them to return a recommendation to the committee of the whole. My mind, that would be a draft ordinance for us to consider.
So our city attorney?
Yeah, and we have to go to the city attorney.
And if we have that, we could change anything before...
Yes, absolutely. And we'd have a preaching system to change this. Absolutely.
Mr. Root, that was my follow-up question. I think changes would be more than what we will. Doesn't have to go back to the planning commission for long. We can change certain council to say.
Any further discussion? Okay. I'm going to call for the vote. The motion we're considering is to send a request along with applicable documentation to the planning department and planning commission to consider regulation of short-term rentals and for them to return a recommendation to the committee of the whole. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed signify by saying no. That motion carries by a vote of seven to zero. That concludes all of our business for this evening. If there are no objections, we will stand adjourned.